I've actually enjoyed working with Greg. This is a unique opportunity for me to maybe talk a little bit about the CVB from a business perspective, since the company I work with, ITA Group, does a fair amount of business in this space, if you will. So, first slide, just very quickly, just kind of highlights who ITA Group is. We are a 100% employee-owned company headquartered here in Greater Des Moines. There are four companies that are associated with ITA Group. It's our engagement solution agency which focuses on events incentive and recognition programs. ITA has a market research firm that's headquartered out of Boston, Chadwick, Martin and Bailey. To help our, we give our clients data-driven decisions around events and incentive programs, as well as Hartman Studios, which is headquartered in San Francisco. We do big events through them. For example, we just ran the Oracle Open World Program in San Francisco for 60,000 people through that organization, then International Travel Associates. On the event side, ITA Group booked about 236 programs in 2017. We'll be updating our fiscal year 18 numbers here soon, but we operate in multiple countries. This particular slide shows that we have programs operating in roughly 62 countries, and it gives you kind of a brief outline of the most popular cities, both in North America as well as on a global basis. The purpose of saying all that is that many would be surprised in a city to know that these are 14 CVBs that came to Des Moines to visit ITA Group. And we will have convention visitor bureaus come to Des Moines, trying to help us understand and appreciate why we would want to send an event to, whether it's Vegas or Italy. And so, many of the things that we're doing with the CVB is helping us identify why we would make a recommendation to send a program to a particular country or location. And we utilize the CVB because many of these cities also provide incentives where they'll help us market and promote the destination to the program participants that might be going on that program. So, I see tremendous value in what a CVB does to create demand for events being run in a particular city, and I just wanted to kind of tee this up. From a perspective of, we have a company right here in our city that does a fair amount of business in this space and has great value in the CVB. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Greg to give you a report on how we're measuring the impact that the CVB is having or Catch Des Moines here in Greater Des Moines.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, or good morning, council. Thanks for the wake-up call on this beautiful Monday morning. I'll just kick off with our value proposition. We market the region, we increase visitors, and obviously, we generate economic impact. Hotel motel tax collection process, we kind of designed this new way to help people really understand a little bit better where the taxes, how the taxes work. The people obviously travel to Greater Des Moines, they spend dollars on shopping, entertainment, sporting events, et cetera. They stay overnight in a hotel. When they check out, they pay both the hotel motel tax and the sales tax. The hotel then writes the check to the state of Iowa, the state of Iowa then returns the check to the cities, and the city then divvies their two-sevenths to Bravo, two-sevenths to Catch Des Moines, and keeps the remaining three-sevenths. Hotel inventory and our tax growth has been a conversation over the last few years, and as you well know, the hotel inventory has grown tremendously throughout the metro, especially with the new Hilton Hotel, 330 rooms downtown, the additional growth in the Des Moines, specific city of Des Moines, and the suburbs as well. We still see growth in West Des Moines, Ankeny, Altoona, and Urbandale in particular. But you can also note that our budget has increased, you know, especially over the past five years. We're kind of seeing a leveling off, though, as far as our budget goes. This year, we actually budgeted a, just a 3% growth in hotel motel tax. We asked our auditors to identify and give us some numbers on how much of our budget really is dedicated to what we call a program expense versus a management expense, and we were happy to see these numbers, and that you can see the majority of our dollars are spent directly on program expense, marketing the region as a visitor destination. Our board, about two years ago, set up a new policy regarding our reserve funds, and following this year's audit, we were able to totally fund our reserve fund. Total reserve fund is 22% of our overall budget. 5% is put away for future bid incentives to, so to be used for maybe an emergency situation. Last year, for instance, we were able to book USA Track and Field Championships on a short-term basis. We had bid fees to the $50,000 range, plus other expenses and sponsorships and things like that, and we're able to utilize those future bid incentives for things like that. Our operating reserves are at 17% of our total budget, so 22% of our total budget is in a reserve account. Our partners are very important to us within the, I'll show you that slide in a little bit. We have 957 total partners throughout the metro. We have almost 100% retention rate of those partners, which says a lot that they believe in us. And those range from everything, from hoteliers, restaurants, attractions, to the large corporations throughout the metro as well. Just a quick sampling of some of the digital ads that we'll be running, actually, this holiday season. You can see, I have a blast which promotes the shopping in the metro area, Principal Charity Classic. These are all co-op ads. These companies or organizations have also partnered with us in these ads, and of course, the Science Center of Iowa. Our five-year sales bookings synopsis can show, will show you that our sales bookings grow, have grown by 19% versus hotel inventory growing at 16%. So, we're ahead of the wave there. I'm very proud of that as well. Last year, booking 302 new conventions, sporting events, meetings, et cetera. We go back to a five-year investment, and our budget roughly, if you take our $5 million budget average for the last five years, equals $25 million that we've utilized in marketing. We've booked 1,388, again, meetings, conventions, sporting events, which have an economic impact of over $500 million back into the economy. And these numbers just include our group business that we're doing, does not quantify anything on the leisure tourism side, that we also put a lot of money towards luring those visitors as well. Year-to-year compare, or year-end comparison, we actually either booked or hosted this past year, 715 different conventions and events. 296 of those occurred because of our direct sales efforts, creating an economic impact of over 78 million, and 302 events were booked into future years, creating an additional economic impact of $110 million. We also keep a close eye on our competition out there, what they're doing, their budget size, staff size, hotel motel tax, et cetera. You'll see on this chart that we're at the bottom end, at least, of our total budget in comparison to our competitive cities. You may note that Omaha and Oklahoma City full-time employees are lower than us. Omaha is a city agency, so they don't have expense or personnel regarding finance and some of their admin people and what have you. Kind of the same story with Oklahoma City, they're part of their chamber there, so again, they don't have finance, admin, and support staff in that, in those roles as well. Our PACE report is a report that we share with our hotels, really on any daily basis. They have access to this report. And we're proud of this report currently, because our pace this year is 125% above what our pace should be, and looking at next year, we're 104% above pace. Looking at our competitive city set, which we look at Madison, Oklahoma City, and Omaha in this particular set, we're ahead of them both for this year in pace, and next year, we're quite a bit ahead of them, which is somewhat of a red flag, because they're going to be a lot more competitive and a lot more cognizant of room rates and a little bit more aggressive going after that short-term business next year. So, we've got to be cautious and strategic on how we market and sell next year. Staff size, there's been some question about our staff size. We've grown essentially by one person, really, over the past five years. Our tourism effects, obviously, creates a strong economy, creates more jobs. U.S. Travel Association estimates there's about 18,000 jobs now in the metro that are directly related to the tourism industry. It obviously boosts city prestige, civic pride, media attention, new opportunities, quality of life, and attracts and retains talent to our communities and our corporate businesses here. This was a new stat. Every year, the state comes out with their economic impact to travel on Iowa, again, done by the U.S. Travel Association, and they have figured out that each household would pay $661 more in taxes without the revenue generated by travel and tourism, which I think is a very important number. 2.2 billion is what they estimate the travel expenditures are to both Polk and Dallas I'm going to show you a quick video here. Will this work on a PDF? I'm not going to show you a quick video here. Let me see if it'll, it doesn't look like it's going to run. I'll send this back to you in a PowerPoint, and you guys can view this. It's about a minute long. It's what we're calling our new relevancy video. Talks about really people, what we affect by bringing in the people that we do, and the different things that we do to, obviously, boost the economy here in the metro. We've also unveiled this year our strategic plan for the next three years, which is basically three pillars. Advance the Catch Des Moines relevancy. You can see under that, we want to continue to be a leader in the region, involved in all conversations regarding destination development. We've been very actively involved in the skate park project, we're very actively involved in Water Trails Project, and many other projects around the metro. Obviously, we'll continue to market Greater Des Moines as a tourist destination, promote tourism as a major industry within Greater Des Moines as well. Plus, we want to enhance the visitor experience. We want to extend the visitor's stay, or have them consider a return visit, obviously very important to us, and provide a great visitor experience while they are here, and then, bottom line, increase economic impact to continue to strategically lure conventions, meetings, sporting events, and leisure travelers to the metro area. This year is going to be an exciting year for us, too. Across the country, really across the world, many CVBs are embarking on what they're calling a tourism master plan, a futures plan, and we've just identified the company. We reached out to seven different organizations for RFPs, and we selected that organization just last week. And they will begin a master plan of the whole metro area. They'll do an inventory of existing amenities that play a big role in attracting visitors to the metro. They're going to do an inventory of planned future amenities, I'm sure including the county soccer block complex that's under study right now. They're going to study all the rest of the area infrastructure. They'll do comparisons with similar destinations to us, what industry changes are down the road, and of course, doing a SWOT analysis as well. A lot more information to come. So, this is going to be a really neat, kind of create a new footprint for us in looking at the future of what our industry looks like in the metro area. You also have in front of you a one cheater that we've done for just the city of Des Moines. We're doing this actually for every city to show you specific numbers that we've done in bookings this past year. Our travel trade show, where we've been throughout the year, throughout the country to promote the metro area, shows you how many media stories. We created over 456 media stories across the country this last year. And then, the far-right column is a recent hotel motel survey that we did throughout the metro, which really shows you some good results, shows you how the hotels do value what we do for them, and some of their comments as well. And on that, I will take any questions, comments.
All right. Anybody?
Yeah. I'm interested in understanding some of this hotel stuff a little bit better. And on one of the, I don't know that they're page numbers, but this slide, we looked at the hotel motel tax in the last three years has been pretty flat, as we've had significant new inventory come on, online. Just trying to understand that. Do we anticipate that to be going up? Like, what, how do you explain the numbers?
I think it's based on the current demand. So, we've built a lot more hotels in the metro area. Some demand has, especially on the corporate side, corporate really dictates a lot of what happens in hotel occupancies throughout the metro. So, there isn't really any new corporate generators in town. You know, the big corporations, the principals, Wells Fargos, Nationwide, et cetera, really drive so much of that business. And not that their business is flat, but there's so much more inventory, there hasn't been an increase in the demand. The, you know, as far as what we're trying to do, we focus on primarily the weekends, the shoulder periods, things like that, to boost those occupancies.
Yeah. Could we have higher occupancy and things still stay flat? I mean, is this a, because the hotel motel is, well, it's a measure of cost, right? So, if room rates went down?
We're not seeing that. We're seeing room rates really kind of staying flat also. We saw, we saw, if you look back in the past five years, you've really seen room rates increase dramatically, as you've seen all across the country. And occupancy levels, really, if you look back, again, five years, you'll see we're always running metro-wide in about the low 60 percentile range, which is somewhat misleading, because if you look at the major brand hotels in your city and really throughout the metro, you're going to see much higher occupancy levels, mid-70 percentile, things like that, with higher average daily rates as well.
I also just don't want to minimize the fact that in, you know, a five-year period, we've increased revenues through hotel motel dollars by 25%. I mean, that's a, that's a really, really good clip, and I think probably few communities have been able to generate that kind of increase. It's just that when you inject a whole bunch more rooms, it's going to control price for a while. It happened five years ago, and it's happening again, but this, these are all good numbers. But it is, I mean, obviously, we didn't increase revenue to the same percentage that we did rooms, you know, so the price and the occupancy went down a little bit as a function.
And so, what, I mean, what do we expect in the coming years? I mean, we've got, and I don't know if the occupancy number was on here somewhere.
No.
I mean, that's where I really want to get a sense, and, you know, I noticed one of the things that stood out, we have significantly more hotel rooms than Omaha or Madison. I mean, on the list of comparables.
Now, I have to tell you, though, the Omaha and Madison numbers, because they're CVBs, we represent 15 municipalities or a regional organization. Omaha specifically is a city agency, so they're talking only the numbers within the city of Omaha.
Now, also, you have to remember that Omaha doesn't have any suburbs, except for Bellevue. Papillion has built a whole lot of hotels out in that strip on the far west and south side, too, outside of Omaha.
I can, we can send you specific reports for Des Moines. We get weekly reports from an agency called Star Smith Travel Research Data, which really does hotel occupancy RevPAR info across the country, and we can send you at any time, anything you may need, which we utilize that all the time for, to watch things like when World Pork Expo is in town, how much that impacted the entire metro area, and we can see specifically how it impacted. We know it impacted Des Moines, but how did it impact some of the suburbs and things like that? So, we can, we can share any kind of that information with you regarding occupancies, RevPAR, average daily rate.
Yeah, and I think you've shared some with our staff in the past, but it's been a while since I've looked at those numbers. I mean, the main questions that I have, particularly in terms of the amount of hotels, I know we're going to have a couple more coming to us, and I'm at the point where I've got questions about, you know, do we take the foot off the gas in terms of providing incentives to build hotels? If it's still a good idea to build hotels, maybe the private sector should be stepping up and doing that without incentives versus, I mean, there's got to be something unique about what that hotel is, and I'd just like to understand the data a little better, to understand where we are and what we're doing from a build-out perspective.
Yeah, I can assure you that the economic development team here, we've worked very closely with them, particularly over the last couple of years where we've seen all this hotel growth, and I think they're very cautious. I mean, they get a lot of numbers from us and a lot of info on that as well.
Because the need in hotels for Des Moines might be different than, because of, you're talking to 15 communities all around, so what Des Moines impact is could be a different percentage. We could have a higher rate than if you had the Suburbans thrown in because of the...
Yes, our hotels could be doing better because...
Right, because of the business that comes into conventions and things.
And this goes to my next question, was around the big events, and that's what the Hilton was designed to help us attract. How would you evaluate how we're doing there? You know, what metrics should we be using and so?
Well, I think number one, it's too early to really look at their occupancy, because they're going to be like a roller coaster because of the newness.
But they're still in their first year.
Yeah. But we've, we have actually booked, I want to say, 26 new conventions and meetings into that hotel over the next, probably in the next five years so far. Most all of those groups are groups that have never been here before. They said they would not come here unless we had a headquarter hotel. So, in that aspect, it's helped us tremendously, and we continue to do that.
I mean, is there a measure by which we should evaluate success? I mean, is it 26 events over five years, or do we expect that, you know, when it's not quite as new, we should be up to 40 or 50 new events? We should be retaining those 26 so that some of them are repeat?
I mean, we're just beginning. You know, the hotel just opened in March, so, but obviously, we've been marketing and selling that before they opened the doors. We're not done with 26, trust me, and I don't know that that's, you know, anything to raise the, raise the flag about right now, but I think there's a lot of different things. You can look at new business that it's drawn in. I think the success of the hotel itself, which obviously Hilton will know, you know, financially is performing, and you as partners in that hotel, I'm not sure who all the partners are, but you two will know.
Mr. Manager?
Just to kind of add on to what Councilmember Manamalma's talking about, we heard for years prior to the hotel that that was the one thing that the CVB would like to see the community do. What's the next thing that the city could do to help your business, help grow the Visitors Bureau, the numbers? Have you thought about that? What?
Well, I think, I think anytime we improve the infrastructure of what we have here, you know, even little things, the skate park will not have a huge impact on our industry, but it'll have an impact. I mean, it's going to allow us to go after some USA Skateboarding Events, some van events, and all these different amateur skateboarding events. I think the huge thing is going to be the Water Trails, which, you know, I know is a really a long-range project, but that, that would really, I think, change the face of tourism in this metro area. I think what you're doing, looking at the county soccer complex, the potential there, all those kinds of things will really help us, you know. Sports, as you all know, has been a huge feather in our cap over the last, you know, 10 years or so, a lot due to the complexes you all have in the city. We are now seeing competition out there in Overland Park, in Texas, in Ohio, in Illinois, where these complexes have 22, 26 soccer fields in one place. You know, we recently lost our bid on the USA Youth Soccer Association that we've hosted multiple times in this community, but we always had to split their tournament between two different venues, one here and one in West Des Moines. So, you know, the more we can add to infrastructure, stuff like that, I think is always a good thing as well.
So, I think, Mayor, we'll put together some more data on the hotels to help inform the council. We'll get some of that from you.
You bet.
The slide that's in front of us now, one of the information points that we'll add to that is the total taxes paid on hotel stays. What you have on this chart is just the local aspect of that. Is that correct? That there might be some, obviously, in Iowa, there's a 5% that's on top of this, but some of these other market areas also have additional taxes charged for hotel stay?
Right. Yeah, they do.
And so, the total paid might look just slightly different, so we'll provide that as well. I think there's a report that you would also sometimes talk about, again, back to the hotel, that that was oftentimes the number-one reason that events would not come to Des Moines. I'd be curious what your data is showing now, moving forward, is what is the top one or two items?
When we lose, when you lose business.
When you lose business to other communities, what those reasons are, because that might give us an idea of what we need to focus on, maybe, moving forward as a community. That'd be helpful as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I would appreciate some element of benchmarking. I mean, when I see, because I'm not, I'm not on the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I don't know if these numbers are, you know, if you were here in front of us three years ago, and these numbers are on track with what, what we were hoping to accomplish, or if they're not, and I'd appreciate some help in being able to evaluate that. The best way that I know how to do that is going forward, and I'd like to have a sense of what we think we can accomplish in the next five years and what success would look And I don't know if that's something that you've done or you can provide, but I'll at least put it out there, because that would be helpful to me to understand how we're doing.
Explain your benchmarking. Who you want to see us benchmarked against, other community, other cities?
What we, what we think we can do. I mean, I presume at some point, you know, we're new on the, with the Hilton. At some point, we had, we think we can get X number of new events of X size, and this is how we're doing, or when this is grouped up.
Greg. I completely agree, and I think, I think the CVB Board and Greg and his team want to sell it.
And I think, I think the CVB Board and Greg and his team want to sell it. There really are two owners of the hotel, though, us and the county. The CVB, you know, isn't part of the, the ownership. And they're, the Hilton, you know, as the, one of the owners of the hotel, we have our own marketing staff and sales staff, and, and we ought to be working with them first and foremost, and the CVB, to back them up for larger regional things.
This is bigger than just the one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking more than just the one hotel. So it's really, what is, and I'm really concerned about on Des Moines, how are we doing on track? Are we keeping the pace in the percentages of rooms to, you know, this is just going down forward?
We're, we'll, we'll provide any information you want. I, I serve on the board.
Yeah.
I, I think this is as positive of a report as we've had.
Oh, yeah.
In a long time. Things are really well. Remember, for every $2 of revenue that the CVB generates for the CVB, they generate $5 of revenue for the city and our general fund. Some of that, we choose to spend on Bravo, but that, that's our decision. It was the citizens that decided through a referendum to fund the CVB. And, and, and so we're, we're, we're doing really well. And in fact, over the course of the year, Scott and I have had conversations about the use of surplus funds. We're, we're ahead of budget and over budget this year, and I think we have been each of the last couple of years for what the city anticipated. So from a benchmarking standpoint of what we budgeted, we're ahead of, we're ahead of that. And I, I think, I think Scott could provide us our numbers. We actually get the money for hotel motel, right? And then pass it on to you.
And then it goes on, no, I think from a benchmarking, from how Des Moines is doing.
So we get the money, I mean, we have, we have a very easy way to document and, and show increased revenue.
So that page report that we have up on screen, Greg, going back, you know, the five years, is that the type of growth you've seen with the, the pace percentage of 125%? Or is this better than, than what, you know, as far as benchmarking?
This has been a strong, a strong year, strong booking year.
Yeah.
It, it will fluctuate. You know, every year, though, our board, we go to our board with our overall objectives, one of them being our sales goals. And I will guarantee you that our board has never said, no, go ahead and remain flat this year. There is always increase in that, and, and we generally always meet or exceed those goals as well. So, yeah, I, I think back to Councilman's question, I mean, this is one way we benchmark ourselves in, in our bookings, and this is done by a neutral organization. These are not our, we, we provide the numbers to an organization that provides a TAP report, which is Tourism Analysis Projections, and they put all these numbers together. So, you know, according to this, our base is, is strong.
Yeah, that's...
That was to my point.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Anybody have anything else?
The one...
You know, Greg, go ahead. I think that, that one of the things that, all the questions we have here, I think the, the way that the Convention and Visitors Bureau, CVB, Catch Des Moines, works sort of hand-in-hand with Bravo, because I spent quite a bit of yesterday with veterans here in Des Moines. It was sort of interesting to listen to what they, you know, got out of their experience here in Des Moines over this last week. And all the things that they talked about were arts and culture, that they experienced and how amazed they were at some of that. And of course, that's Bravo's focus, but in the meantime, you guys helped promote that. So it's sort of a, a good partnership that you have with them that, that helps. And I think your, your work in, in doing your tourism master plan and all that will help give us input as to how we might suggest, and these other organizations, work in the, in this metro area to improve the, the ability and the experience, if you will, for all those people that are coming here for sometimes other, other issues, but they get a chance to get out and about.
Sure.
Quite frankly, it's interesting to listen to them. One guy hadn't been here in 10 years, and he said, holy smokes, how this city has changed, and that sculpture garden, and this and that, and, you know, down on the ballpark. And it, it just was amazing, just listening, you know?
We hear it all the time, yeah.
I didn't want to pull out a pen in front of him and start taking notes, but it was sort of interesting to listen to how people view the opportunity of, of arts, culture, everything else here in Des Moines, and the experience. So thank you for all the work that you do. And also, interesting is those people who came from all over the country were comparing Des Moines to the other places that they had been. And I got to tell you, at least at the table where I was last night, maybe it was just for my benefit, but they were really saying, this is really the best place we've been in, in a long time. You guys have set the curve, and I think they're going to Battle Creek, Michigan, or someplace like that next year. And it'll be interesting to see how that comparative would be, if somebody remembers Des Moines as a comparative to Battle Creek. But any rate, good work. Thank you for everything that you guys are doing. Any other questions? Chris, you had one more comment or something?
That's all right. Greg does a great job. You've read about CVBs swinging for the fences around the state and around the country, and making some big mistakes. I, I just think we're very lucky to have Greg's competent, very professional leadership, and our CVB is doing really good things.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate the support.
Yeah.
All right, let's move forward. Mr. Manager, it looks like we're going to kick off our budget process, and maybe you would like to lead that?
This is our first opportunity to...
Tom, thanks for coming.
As a full council, talk about the budget cycle. You're going to hear about process, you're going to hear about timing, and the future meetings that we will have lined up for you, that'll be topic by topic. So with that, actually, I'm just going to kick it over to Bob, Finance Director.
Well, I got two instructions. One from Ben, it's all about parks, right? Make sure you do that. And secondly, Councilman Gray challenged, is there any good things going on as we kick off the process, correct?
Correct.
So there's some things that we're working on before we launch this, that I, that I would caution you that say may or may not happen, but we feel pretty good at this point. Our health insurance might be about one-tenth of what it was last year in that increase. I think our, we're self-funded, and I think we've started to see some changes in that that's been very beneficial. So that's one of those things we hope that stands in that place, but I can't tell you what's going to happen in the next few months, but right now, it looks pretty good. So I think that's good news. I also think one of the good news things is also, you might recall when the franchise fee thing came in, that 2.5% we had to do? We were scheduled in 2022 to sell another $19 million bond, because it was anticipated potentially we wouldn't have enough franchise fees coming in to make that payment. Today, as we sit here, and hopefully it comes true, is we think by the end of this calendar year, that 19 million out in '22 will be erased. So we think that's pretty cool. There's still, there's still franchise fees, things to, to be paid off and the rest of it, but that originally, it was like, we're going to run out of money, and we're going to have to sell a $19 million bond out. So I think those are good things. The other one was, if things go well, you might see where we start, the infusion of TIF going in the parking fund might get less to almost nothing in the near future, hopefully if things go well. That does a lot of things. That puts the parking thing back on its, without that infusion, they can start paying for maybe some of their own improvements throughout the parking fees and things of that nature. So those are pretty good things to, to kind of kick that off, right? That said, this will be my second year before you guys. By now, I, I mean, I can joke with the best of them, but I think this is the most important things you guys do during the year. And the way that I look at it, I'm not here to sugarcoat anything. I'm going to tell you what I see. I understand who, what the manager does, and I understand what the council does. In the end, those are your guys' decisions, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to couch something to make it look better or good. I'm going to just tell you what we see. Today, you're going to hear what we see in today's lens that could change. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Nick, and he's going to take you through the, how we're going to do our calendar, so you can get planned for that, and then how maybe we can plan for, if you choose to do sales tax, how we can maybe handle that with one. So, Nick?
Thanks, Bob. As you can kind of see right here, we've got the, our anticipated calendar for workshops and council meetings. What we're going to try and do is today, we have our kickoff meeting, just to kind of give you guys a brief description of what we're seeing. And then we're going to go into kind of what we've seen before, where we've got the enterprise funds with a solid base in the, in the storm sewer and sanitation sewer coming in November. December is going to have, at the very beginning, we're going to have kind of a preliminary CIP, so you're going to kind of see our, our presentation on where we sit today and where we're seeing the different projects. And then we're going to go into the parking housing in SMID, and kind of how those, those funds are, are looking at the time. And then we'll go into the general operations, which would be our general fund, our road use, road use fund, and, and different things like that. And then we are going to come back and kind of do an overall, overall look and changes and a second, secondary look at the CIP, so that if anything changed over the course of those workshops that we go over with you, we'll kind of re-highlight the things that are different from what you've seen. And then the council meetings, where you'll actually approve the, the public notice for publish, and then hold the hearing and the adoption. So we have those highlighted out, so you can kind of see what, what's coming on the docket. And Bob said, the other piece that I was going to cover is, if you guys decide to go forward with sales tax, how we would approach that. To try and handle what we refer, what we received as guidance from the state last year, to be able to incorporate a possible sales tax in the state forms at one time, what we're going to try and do is, we're going to, to complete the books that you guys are familiar with, assuming no sales tax. So this information will, will be standalone if nothing goes forward with sales tax. And then there's going to be a memo that we put together, that we try and highlight where that different sales tax dollars would then go. So then that way, we can actually have the budget books and this memo put together to kind of show what the state forms that you're approving to go forward. That way, it's both incorporated into one state form, so we won't have to do a budget amendment unless the sales tax does not happen, if we go forward with the sales tax vote in March. So that's just kind of a, a way to incorporate those expenses as a special revenue fund in the state forms. And then that way, if it doesn't happen, we can amend it out. That way, we already have it in the budget. I think last year, we just didn't, we were going to do an amendment if the sales tax passed. That way, we can kind of incorporate it right ahead of time this year. With that, I'm going to let Bob take back the floor.
Any questions?
Yeah.
On the, on the calendar, and this might be more for the manager than for you guys, but last year, we did Speak Up Des Moines, sort of public budget events. Do we have any of those planned this time around?
We are currently working on, trying to figure out what type of engagement that we're trying to do. I think we're looking at more of an educational and kind of showing where, where our monies are coming from and what they are used for. We're still currently working on figuring out kind of the best timing for that. That's already in the docket, so.
It, it has been, just as a follow-up, a sort of a directive from the council for the last number of years, that we do go out to the community and talk to them about our budgets and get some input. They hopefully get some understanding about what we're doing and how we're doing it, and what our priorities are. And what, last year, we did three or four of them. And I think that we ought to continue that.
And part of that is driven by what, how close to a status quo budget we're looking at. And I would tell you, in this cycle, unless something changes in the next four or five weeks, we are looking at it very much status quo from an operational standpoint. If, obviously, the more we're looking at cuts and things of that nature, the more public interaction we need to have with that. So in this, this environment, I would say it'd be very status quo, and a couple, a couple of public meetings would probably suffice.
Well, but the idea is to go out and let the public know what we're doing, and why we're doing it.
Absolutely.
So...
And to listen a little bit.
Yeah.
Yep, that's exactly right.
How many did show up? Do we have a list of how many people in the, in the meetings that we've done?
We can provide that.
Yeah, we can provide that list.
Hundred, 200, 50?
In total?
Yeah.
In total? Well, we had a live...
Live numbers?
It would probably be in that 50 range, I think, between 50...
Three meetings?
I think we had four, four meetings and then a live Facebook.
Yeah, we can add the online interaction.
We had an online lunch, kind of a lunch and learn type of thing, where you could stream that at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
And 50 people?
Yeah, it's been difficult to get people to come out. We've also had exercises. The budget, the budget area has done a fabulous job as part of that education, Mayor, in having different exercises for the citizens to, to better understand the, the give and take that's necessary within a budget process. So I know they've been creative each year in coming up with different ways to, to have those exercises.
There's the same problem we had on school board budgets, too. There's no cut.
Typically, there's more staff there than residents.
Well, usually, if there's no major change, there's not much participation.
Not to say it's not a good idea, I'm just saying that everyone I've gone to in the last four years, there's been more staff at every single meeting than there is residents.
That's why one of those things, we want to try to get, Joe, is, again, test the electronic way of looking at going out, and I think we've reached more people that way. Not that we shouldn't have some face-to-face, that's what the anticipation is.
I agree.
So...
Good idea.
Take you through a few things, the CIP process. The CIP process, I'll, I'll put it back on us, and I'll tell you, hopefully you saw on the schedule. In the past, you would get the CIP at the very end of the budget and say, here it is, we got to pass our budget, the CIP's in there, and you really haven't had a lot of time to vet it, look at it, and see which ones you like or don't like in that process. So what we're doing differently this year is, on December 3rd, we're going to give you where we're at at that particular time with the CIP. And I can tell you, there's been a lot of hours in that already, trying to get that thing pared down and try to right-size it to where we think at least we've identified the things that you guys have set out in your strategic plan, and things that have been out there for a while. So the good thing about this, you'll get it on December 3rd. We'll have as many meetings as you want once you get it, or meet with them individual or whatever it was, if you have questions. We challenge you guys, some of you, to be champions in things that you say, by golly, we better do this, or there's things you don't feel quite as comfortable with. All those things are going to be helpful if we choose we need to make some cuts. And it's almost two months will take place between the December 3rd meeting and the January 28 meeting, 8 meeting. We have time to kind of work through that, or in the past, maybe you didn't have enough time to get that done. So hopefully, you find that beneficial. The ripple effect, that is, is that by the time we get that, we get to the book and you're comfortable with it, then, then staff can feel more comfortable moving forward on projects, because you've already vetted them, so we're not, we're not starting a project and later finding out, you know, maybe we need to look at that again. So we see a lot of positives in doing it that way. Hopefully, you feel the same way.
Will you have projects in there that, with and without the sales tax?
Yes, we, we will. Right, and we're trying to determine what, how what affects the tax rate and what doesn't. So Scott has this little scoreboard, how he can kind of balance it to see what that looks like. You'll be able to see that later. So absolutely, there's things that you can do if you show, we can't be presumptuous what you're going to do or not do, but obviously, we're allowing for, or we're providing for, should you go forward with sales tax, we'll have a mechanism in place to add things, if that's things you want to add, only if the sales tax passes.
Will there also be a, in there as far as the tax levy increase, if we do A, B, and C, or the, the levy will state where it is now if we eliminate? Is that how you're going to set up these CIP, or maybe that's a question to the city manager?
Well, it's obviously, yes, but I'll tell you, is the, the CIP, the rate will be whatever you want, I mean, whatever you're comfortable with the projects. And, and at least last year, it was that we would decrease our levy rates by, I think, 60 cents or whatever it was. So we'll have all the... 40 cents, yeah. But we were planning on getting, trying to wipe out that increase as well. So everything's possible at this particular point, and I'm sure you're going to be hearing from Scott quite a bit as we sift through it and kind of give you the updates on that. And again, I will tell you is that, that staff's willing to meet with any of you at any given time. If you think there's work sessions, you need to just work that through Scott to see that, so you can see those things. But we hope this little bit longer process helps everybody have a better understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. And then soon we get to that point, we're ready to move forward, the public will have plenty of time to learn what those projects are, and hopefully, there's not any surprises in those projects, since we had, not quite a couple of months to look at those.
Thanks, Bob.
Any other question on the CIP portion of it?
Anybody?
Okay. Next thing, I want to talk a little bit about the enterprise funds, because these are never fun either, but I will, I will remind you this little thing here that those, that made it. And the SEC requires certain things to happen with the city now. We have to disclose a lot of things. And one of those things that last year that we brought forward and will do it again this year is, our enterprise funds have to meet a certain ratio or our bond rating changes. And the last thing I think we want to do is going there and put on Emma now for the world to see is, we're not keeping up with what we sold bonds on and putting jeopardy what our future bonds would be. We all feel pretty good at the end when we get our double A, when we get those and we see how many people go for it. But if we don't keep certain ratios in that, revenues to expenditures, how much money you have in the bank, the willingness of the council to understand when you need to increase rates or not, because that goes a long ways when they're reviewing us, those things are all important. And although, I guarantee you, there's nobody more than me that wants to bring increases back to you. But I'm telling you, as I sit up here today, to meet those ratios based on the amount of projects we've added to those enterprise funds, you're going to see an increase. You've already made a decision with stormwater. That's done. You've done it for the next five years, so that's set. The solid waste division, you do differently. The solid waste division, you have to have a certain amount of working capital. I think it's 20% of working capital to be able to meet our obligations of what we said out there. We are below that, 20%. So there will be some increase. We've talked to Scott, could we hopefully convince you guys to give us a couple of years to make up that gap and not try to do it all at one time? Because it's probably about 5%. And we're hoping maybe we can become, maybe stair-step that. And that's how it looks today. The sanitary is probably about 3% to meet everything that I just laid out. And what you guys learned through the disclosure process, you're going to see it. And again, I don't want, and again, I told you I'm not going to sugarcoat anything. I'm looking at Joe because I know how he feels about this as well. I don't know any other way to do it, is if we want to keep our bond rating, we have to do certain things. And as you know, there's been a lot of projects go through our stormwater and our sanitary to keep up with rules and regulations through the EPA or just meet up with all our challenges and bring in growth and stuff of that nature. So most likely, you're going to see one, and I'd rather you know now than Wes come back later to do that. On the other end, I don't see another increase in the parking things. I think you guys have already said that, so that's enterprise fund. We're not anticipating seeing that change. So question is about that. And again, it's the lens of today, not the lens of the dates in there. We're doing everything we can to try to find any places we can to try to limit what those increases may have to be. The last thing that I want to talk to you about is the property tax. This won't be a fun conversation either. I think it was well documented in the past that the city, if we stayed on the same trajectory year, you're going to see about a $1.50 increase over the next three to five years. That hasn't gone away. This particular year, based on, and this is where we are today primarily, I'm talking about through our CIP portion that's being levied against, you're probably going to see about a 35 cent increase based on what you've seen in the prior years and what you have added or asked for as part of your strategic plan. So there's things in there that were things we didn't contemplate last year, but during your strategic plan, there's things that you prioritize. I think there were some sidewalks in that thing. I think there was, I don't know, there's several things that, so now, per your request, they're in there. And now you'll get that chance to challenge, to go back and look and say, what things do we think, okay, if we don't want to increase our rate 35 cents or somewhere thereof, it gives you a chance now to look at those things and work with your manager to say, maybe these are more important than that. But really, this is only going to work if somebody really champions things. That's what Scott keeps reminding, somebody's got to be a champion of things. And I'm going to challenge you guys, if there's something you really feel strongly about, tell Scott that's what it is. Just make sure that's not one of those pieces that we cut if we're trying to get below that 35 cents. So that is, at this particular point in the lens, and I probably should have ended with some of the good stuff that Bill asked me to do, not that. But I would tell you is, it's lower than what it was anticipated last year in the CIP. It was closer to that 40 or 50 cents. So you can see that Scott's been working with staff and trying to find ways to bring it down already. But for everything we bring down, there's other things that I think prioritize because the world changes. And Des Moines is no different. And there's things that become more priorities than maybe they were the year before.
So every penny is about 80 cents?
Every, yeah.
For 80,000?
80,000.
For about every, $80,000. But for about every million dollars you add, it's a little over a penny. So you can look at it two ways. One is the 80,000. 80,000. The other one is, every million or so, you're going to drop a penny or add a penny or sort of different projects.
80,000.
Well, but the debt, we're talking about the debt that's sitting out there for 20 years.
Right, that's the 80,000.
Yeah, and so that's different than paying as you go.
Correct.
And, you know, at least for me, it makes me a little uneasy as we keep adding debt and knowing how long some of this stuff lasts. We're going to just turn right around and pay a whole bunch of interest on debt. I sort of like the idea of the pay as you go, and hopefully, we're going to do more of that if we do decide to go with the local option.
Local option tax adds a whole lot of different things in the toolkit that you'll have a chance to look at. So the only thing I want to do is, I want to try to look at Chris out of the corner of my eyes. We have developed what we call the Coleman factor. We did put what it would take to be able to make sure five-year assets or five-year, 10-year, 10 or 20. So we'll have it at your convenience. We'll show you how that works. We really did call it that, just so you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
So.
It's better than Paige referring to him as Coleman commodes around the.
So as you guys said about when we go out and go out to the community, we also listen to you guys. We listen to things you're talking about. Chris, I know you've talked about that for some time. I don't know that you're going to, you may have to increase rates to get what you want done. There's also, if you're able to get the sales tax, you might be able to get that accomplished. And I'm not just singling Chris out, but I know that he's brought that up a couple of times that I visit with him. Any other questions for finance?
I have a question. This is Westergaard on the phone.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, are you, do you have an additional handout there that you can save for me? Or I know online, there was just the one page with the schedule. Are you handing, do you have any more detailed information for us?
No. We don't.
Okay.
Primarily, we're still working through what we have before we bring that final, or at least the preliminary final product to you on December 3rd.
Okay, all right. I had just read in the paper today, it sounded like the register was already on, you know, saying that some things were staying and some things were going. And I didn't know if you had more information.
That'd be Scott's deal, not mine. No, nothing at this point that I'm aware of.
A waiting pool.
Okay.
$30,000.
Great.
So question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coleman has his hand up.
I'm sorry. That's all right. I appreciate all the work that finance has done and will do and the manager. We have a lot of competing interests. I think many of our residents will find that level of increase unacceptable. So at this stage of the game, I would say that the council's going to have to probably understand this at a higher level than ever. Because one of the reasons why I tend to side with many of those residents that say it's unacceptable is we're within a couple of days of it being in the news and the paper that we already have a, looking at what could be a 10% increase in assessed value, which is a more primary factor of increased revenue for the city than even increasing the levy. And so I guess what I'd like to know is, not now, today, but what would we anticipate of new revenue if we didn't increase the levy at all, the debt levy at all?
This year, I mean?
Yeah. If we were looking at a 10% increase.
The 10% is going to be in the 2021, not the 1920. So it wouldn't affect the budget we're getting ready to do at this point.
Okay. So those talking points, and Scott and I had a preliminary conversation about the 10% assessed increase. I'd also just like to know more about where that number is derived from. Is that a composite of the whole city?
It's a composite of the whole county. So we tend to be on the bottom side of that a lot of times. So when you're hearing 10%, there's most, a lot of the time, the city of Des Moines is in that lagging piece in that. So.
I know that as a composite in the city, we may have been in the lagging areas. But I also know that Beavertale, the mayor's neighborhood, neighborhoods on the south side, far exceeded most of the suburban areas, you know, in terms of their value and their market. I think Des Moines overall went up in single digits and mine went up about 20%. And so you have that around the city. So do we have early indication by zones or areas of the city what the increase is going to be?
We do not, but I will visit with the assessor again to see if they have any, because he had the preliminary data to show just in general for the whole county. We don't even have all that right now to move into this budget. So I don't know that we can break it down the way you want, but we'll do our best to try to get you a little more. And if that were to happen, then obviously, that would be a lot easier conversation sitting up here in the next year. But I want to make sure that we're talking about the 1920 budget, not the 2021. That's not this budget we're getting ready for, it's the budget after. So if we truly had a 10% today, we would be having a different conversation for the budget you're getting ready to have.
Just so that I know, and I'm not debating.
Okay.
Is that, is the reason it's the next year is because we pay taxes a year in?
Yes.
So it is, some people might read that it's effective for this current tax year.
Yes.
So it does go up this year, it's just that we get the revenues a year later.
People will get them, as you know, you've already got it for the year, what's the year of the data we've got at this point. And then you get, people get a chance to say that's too high or too low. There's a lot of things that happen between now and we get the data. Technically, we don't even get the data for our budget until January to this now. So a lot of things could happen. There's nobody would be happier than to see the city of Des Moines get a 10%. We'd have the conversation about how we could do things differently the following year.
Well, I think from a budget standpoint, there's tens of thousands of homeowners that we represent, their 10% increase in their assessment, even at today's levy, could be catastrophic for their family finances.
So if I could just insert myself, may I just for a second? Let's make sure we all understand that when homes' values go up, that's a good thing. And that is exactly what we are trying to do with revitalizing our neighborhoods.
So we can lower them.
Now, and I also agree with you, though, that we have to be sensitive to what taxes then our residents have to pay. And that's why the state government has set up this system, and it's been this way for 40 years or more, that there are two values for every home and every business. There is the market value, which is doing quite well and is showing large increases. And then there's the taxable valuation, which is, at this point in time, about 55% of that. And that is the value that then your rates are applied against and homes are actually taxed against. That is not in the news. It needs to be in the news that that lower valuation will not be increasing by 10%. The state law does not allow that to occur. The state law limits the growth on the value that you will be taxed against to 3% growth annually statewide. The nuance there is, it doesn't mean that every property is going to grow at 3%. It just means that the market rate values have to be accurate and that the statewide average is 3% on the taxable side. And so we can provide more talking points, and we can definitely put pressure on the media to better illustrate that market values are not what you're taxed against and that there are several steps yet in the process that the state controls and the auditors, county auditors, work with that reduces the valuation growth each year. And in fact, it's a two-year process. It does not even occur every year, so.
So this will affect the rollback?
Absolutely will. The rollback will have to reduce. Oversimplified, again, that 3% cap means that if there is 10% increase on people's homes' values, and the taxable rollback needs to come down about 7%. So that the total impact, the net impact, is about that 3% statewide. But I think it might be helpful to understand where Des Moines is at specifically. Obviously, we don't have the 10% that the countywide often enjoys. But we can also even get more specific and do some example, and we have done this in the past, it's valuable, to understand where neighborhoods.
I started by saying we have to be well-educated and have some talking points right away because they're already in the paper. What I, because in this case, I think you make a case where we're capped and property taxes are limited and the rollback will affect all that. But what you're not saying is, no one in the city would have more than a 3% increase in their property taxes.
Correct.
I have every assessment, and I think I join most people in the city of Des Moines that have had significantly more than that. So I just want to make sure that we don't get so many talking points that we bury people in information that distorts the outcome that they have at their own house and their own family budget.
Fair enough.
Could be helpful to have a breakdown of the areas, because it's probably the same areas will have the same assessment increase. It's, you've had it how many years? I'm sure there's other areas have not. So if we could have like maybe four areas or different components of what makes up.
Mm-hmm. Again, part of our neighborhood revitalization is such that we want the whole city to see building equity in their homes. That will then allow us to manage our tax rates far better.
Bring them down.
As opposed to having, frankly, three or four neighborhoods that are doing very well, but it doesn't change the total amount such that we can lower rates or anything of that nature. We need the whole city to be lifted.
Joe?
Well, we have a list of the CIP projects that we're going to look at before the 3rd of December, before we have the workshop. So we can take a look at those individually and see where we're at before then, and you know, maybe prioritize them. Because that, it sounds to me like that's where the 35 cents is coming into play. It's not the general fund, it's the CIP. I mean, I'd like to know where we're at. I mean, I think you know me well enough, the 35 cents increase to a tax levy next, this next year, March, I will struggle to vote for something like that. So I need to take a look and see where we're spending the money, where we need to prioritize, where things, and really focus on, you know, hopefully to see what the local option can do and what's the benefit for our residents if it is passed.
I agree with Scott. I think you'll get it before Thanksgiving. I think we've got two meetings scheduled this week with our BRC, with Scott. And then after that, I think the plan is bring all the directors in so they can have some input on what projects that they would prioritize as well. So you'll see this vetted as the best that we can. And I would hope before Thanksgiving, Scott, would you say, I don't want to overpromise, but, okay.
That would be helpful.
Okay. We're good?
Anybody else? Anything?
I'll just add one thing that we got last year that I hope we get again this year on the road budget. I think when Jonathan came in, he had those really nice pie charts that looked at the, looked at where our roads were in terms of quality and what investments over time and different levels of investment would lead to in terms of quality of the roads over the long term. I would hope we could get that particular piece updated.
Thank you.
All right. I know that you all were hoping to stay here till 9:00 or 9:30, but we're done a little bit early today.